I call this meeting of the North Adams City Council to order for Wednesday, October 9th, 2024. This meeting is being recorded and can be viewed live on Northern Berkshire Community Television Station, Channel 1303, and will be posted to their website as soon as possible. We will also be live streaming on YouTube at youtube.com/atnorthadams. Just click on the live, then the 2024-10.09 council meeting. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Blackmer here. Bona.
Here.
Green.
Here.
Fitch.
Here.
Morrow.
Here.
Olefskowitz.
Here.
Shade.
Here.
Wilkinson.
Here.
Sapienza.
Here.
All present.
Okay, we have a quorum. Please rise for a moment of silent remembrance. Tonight, we remember the victims of Tropical Storm and Hurricane Helene, where there was over 200 people dead in several southern states, and more than half the deaths were in the state of North Carolina. And the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, public hearing for council paper number 12,426. This time, I will open the public hearing for council paper number 12,426, a petition from National Grid to hold a public hearing for a new pole location on Hodges Cross Road. I'm going to file the communication without objection. We have an updated letter from Mr. Lascarbo, and just to note, we had a... National Grid updated their petition. This was emailed to all councilors and added to the packet. And what it was is that they incorrectly specified the direction from the center line of Current Highway. They identified it as being west, where the location is actually east of Current Highway. Let's see, so... Cards were mailed to the Butters. Noah Butters was residential, and I am going to turn this over to Mr. DeRose from National Grid to speak on this, please, and if you'll go to the mic.
Good evening. Again, I'm here from National Grid. We're installing a midspan pole due to the low-hanging wires. This was a request from Verizon and the owner of the new storage facility to access their driveway. They have got some trailers coming in and out, so they wanted to make sure that they're well in the clear.
Okay.
Any questions for me?
Any questions from the council? Is there anybody in the audience that has any questions? Okay, hearing no further comments or questions. I will close the public hearing portion of the meeting. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Have a good night, guys.
Okay, hearing the visitors. This is an opportunity for the public to speak to the council for two minutes regarding items listed on the agenda. As a reminder, I will tap the gavel when you have reached your two-minute limit to signal that your time has ended, and as a courtesy, I also ask that all parties please refrain from any personal attacks. Anybody for hearing the visitors? Please step to the mic. Name an address for the record, please.
Hi, everyone. I'm Meredith Starr at 77 Bart Street.
Good evening, Mayor Maxey, Council President Sapienza, and council members. My name is Meredith. I'm the Youth Substance Use Prevention Coordinator with the Northern Berkshire Community Coalition, and I'd like to briefly speak tonight about the marijuana license ordinance and voice against raising the licenses to four, or a 20 that was cited in the draft. First, did you know that in 2022, 31.8% of North Berkshire's 8th, 10th, and 12th grade students reported obtaining marijuana from a family member or in their home with their parents' permission? Also, 39.2% of students surveyed said that they felt that their parents' attitudes favored drug use. With more than 30% of families in our community being permissive of marijuana use and allowing their children to use it as well, it is easy to see how accessible marijuana is for our youth and how it can be perceived as not being harmful to their health. Increasing the number of dispensaries has the potential to contribute to an increase in the youth marijuana access and may perpetuate the perception among youth that marijuana is not harmful. Did you know that currently, there are four marijuana retailers in North Berkshire: Adams, North Adams, Clarksburg, and Williamstown, which serves almost 40,000 people total, or approximately 26,000 adults of legal age? That's one retailer per 6,500 adults. Adding two more licenses in North Adams would allow up to seven marijuana retailers in North Berkshire, since there's currently one license in North Adams that has not moved forward with establishing itself. This would potentially oversaturate North Berkshire County with one marijuana retailer per approximately 3,700 North Berkshire adults. Lastly, to put things in perspective, there are five package stores, four addiction treatment centers, and one recovery center in North Adams alone. Increasing the number of marijuana retail locations in North Adams may continue the trend of decreased perception of harm to youth, increased accessibility, and therefore increase the number of community members developing a cannabis use disorder. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else for hearing the visitors? Council Paper Number 11,646-D, An Ordinance to Amend the Revised Ordinances of the City of North Adams, Chapter Z, Section 10.12, entitled License Marijuana Establishments Postponed from the Meeting of September 24, 2024. Okay, and updated... An update has been provided to the councilors. Councilor Shade, do you have an update for us, please?
Yes, so in front of everybody is language that has been agreed upon after having many discussions, several meetings with general government, our city solicitors, and the administration. With the updates that you'll see, there are some definitions that have been added and updated to the language. The big changes are going to be redefining the school entrance and what that entails, the number of licenses to before, rather than 20% of the number of licenses for retail sale of alcohol. Other changes include the administration's request to not allow outdoor grow facilities. Those are the main changes that you'll see in the language. So, we have an updated terms. We have an updated definition of what the entrance to a school zone is, a school entrance, the moving the number of retail licenses to four in total, and the removal of outdoor grow... The removal of the allowance of outdoor grow.
Okay, thank you. And do we have a motion?
Make a motion to pass to a second reading and...
No.
No. I move to refer to the planning board for...
Well, there's a time.
To call a joint public hearing between the... With the... I'm sorry. City Council and the planning board.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion for a joint meeting with the planning board and the city council.
We refer to them, they call it.
Right, okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
You said we do have a second, okay. Counselor Blackmer?
Just a question in the... Your definitions, you exist in licensed current quarter. You say licensed marijuana establishment, and then in parentheses, it says ME, but in every reference throughout the ordinance, it says LME. Is that just a... Did we... I mean, I would move to amend the ME on the first page of the updated one to make it LME instead of ME.
Where is that under?
Okay, so existing licensed transporter, and then impassable barrier, and then licensed marijuana establishment. It says in parentheses, it says ME, but I think that's supposed to be LME?
Yeah.
So, I move to amend ME on that line to LME.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to amend the ME to LME. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay.
Was that for the amendment?
That is strictly... That was for the amendment, yes.
Can we take any further questions?
We can take further questions, yes.
I just want to be clear, if you could answer this to the chair. The retail establishments, is that in the budget state sales tax?
State sales tax.
Where is that in the...
I'm looking under the revenue.
Yep.
We now have... Is it one retail?
We currently, from what I understand, we have one retail establishment in the city.
Correct.
Okay, so...
If I could answer Counselor Green's question.
Yes, go ahead, Mayor.
So, under revenue, towards the top, I think it's the third or fourth line, there's a cannabis line.
Yes. There's two, actually.
So, yeah, so the sales tax, all the revenue we got goes into the first line, and the second line is called cannabis impact, I believe. I don't have it in front of me, but...
Yeah, that was my next question, it was...
So, as...
Would all four establishments be also local impact fees?
No, so local impact fees under the new cannabis control regulations are no longer allowed to be charged or paid, so we would only be collecting the sales tax, the first line that you see there.
So, we have $300,000 in there presently.
And that is just from one retail organization.
Is that anticipated to be collected this year?
Yes, we would hope that their sales would be the same or if not better.
No, I'm talking about the impact fee.
No, no impact fee going forward, so when we set the tax rate, all of those lines will be adjusted.
Okay, so basically what you're saying is it'll be adjusted downward of 300,000, correct?
Let me grab my book. So I can see what you're looking at.
Okay.
No, I think what I'm saying is our local tax that we get on cannabis will remain the same, if not go higher.
I understand.
And then the impact fee, I think it's 177,000?
No, it's 300,000 is the proposed.
The impact fee, yes. So, those, as we... When we set this budget, we didn't have the impact fee figured out, so those... That 344, yes, will go away.
So, we're not going to collect 300,000 this year on impact at all?
No, we'll be collecting the sales tax.
One line at a time. So, we won't collect that 300,000?
Correct.
And these additional three or four things, there will be no impact on that line at all?
Correct.
Okay, if we go up to the other one, the 220,000, that's just from ClearSky?
Correct.
Okay. Now, the other question I have is, on Current Highway, the manufacturing or the growing, it's anticipated it could close at the end of the month. Are we collecting any taxes or any...
Temesco does not own the building. The real... The company, the LLC that owns the building, has been paying the property taxes. The only thing Temesco owes us is personal property.
So, we're not collecting any cannabis revenue at all from there?
No, not at this time, no.
Okay, so right now, as it stands, as of today, the $300,000 is gone.
Correct.
And the anticipated 220,000 is from ClearSky?
Correct.
Okay.
One entity.
One entity.
Yes.
Do you anticipate it going to a million dollars if there's four?
I don't know what their sales revenue will be.
Do you think it'll be as... The other three places will be as lucrative?
I'm not a cannabis person. I can't predict their sales revenue.
No, the reason I ask is you're the one that crafted the...
Right, but this is estimated, so this document is the estimated, so when we go to set the tax rate, we'll be shifting some of these lines, and we will look to the future as to what we anticipate, but I don't know if the other three entities are going to make it through the Cannabis Control Commission. I can't predict that.
I guess that's what I'm asking. On the ordinance that you drew up, first it was a percentage, and then you came back...
So, let's clarify, I did never draw up the percentage. That was originally handed to you.
No, I agree.
So, my recommendation was for...
Yours came through as four.
Correct.
Then I went to general government, the 20, and now it's back to four. Is four enough?
Well, I think four is enough. I don't want to go crazy with the 20. I personally think four is enough because that's who we have knocking on our door for prospective businesses, that this ordinance could help. I don't want to go crazy and have a cannabis business on every corner, but that's a legislative decision, and we had many discussions around that, and I appreciate the general government supporting my recommendation.
Okay, perfect.
I'll say?
Yep. Counselor Shade.
Thank you, and kind of more to clarify on how we reached the number. We originally threw out 20 because we weren't sure if we could have an unlimited number of licenses. After further discussion, we felt that raising it to four to start would be a much better thing than making it way out there and having a ton and not having any control over that. So, the recommendation came back to support four, and that's what we have adopted here. With the potential of that in the future, if business is doing well and we end up getting a lot more applications, that we might expand, but we would look at that in the future.
Counselor Fitch.
Yeah, Counselor Shade, and this, by the way, I trust the general government committee, and I wasn't able to be at the meeting, so I'm just asking a clarifying question. Why was the allowance for outdoor or open-air cultivation operations stricken?
That was a request from the administration, and the committee had decided to agree to not allow open outdoor grow. I think there's a lot of concern from a lot of people about having outdoor grow and the potential for the smell and the environment that it can... The environmental harm that that can cause in neighborhoods. And to be honest, there's not many places in the city, there's very few places in the city, outside of neighborhood areas where a grow... An outdoor grow could potentially work. So, we went with the administration's recommendation and voted to not allow outdoor grow.
Thank you. Counselor Bona?
Yeah. I still support outdoor growth, and for a couple reasons. One, you said there's not a lot of places, and it's correct, there is not a lot of places. It would still have to go to a planning board, it would still have to be approved, so if it was near residential areas and it was a concern, it would probably fail at that point. However, there's a lot of areas where there's farming that is outside of residential areas. Farms spray manure, you know? It smells, and it happens, but again, I... You drive down Current Highway, you can smell the facility that's in Adams when you're driving through Adams, and it's in a building. So, just because it's in a building doesn't mean the odor is not going to get into neighborhoods. Personally, I would probably rather have a field growing up on some mountain that's far from residential homes in an agricultural kind of farm area than I would probably want a commercial building that's in a residential area. So, that's just... But again, there's going to be limited places can be done versus just saying no to all of it. So, I would still support outdoor growth even though it is very limited probably where it would be accepted.
Okay, anybody else? Mayor?
Counselor Bona, I agree with you to a certain extent, however, we remember that we did approve an outdoor grow for Church Street or Ashland Street, which was a huge bone of contention.
Didn't happen, though, did it?
It didn't.
What's that?
It did happen, it was approved, and...
No, but it never...
It didn't because I had to kind of kabosh it.
Correct, but I'm just saying that can still happen.
It could.
You know, versus if someone came and said, "We want to build or grow on a three-acre field way up on this dirt road that's off and there's no one within miles."
I think if the majority of you feel that way and you want to zone something, that's different, but I can't imagine us having an outdoor grow on Ashland Street where it was proposed. That's my big thing with outdoor grow.
The wording could say, though, also, through the chair, sorry, you know, within such a distance of, you know, a residential homes. I'm just saying that that could be added in there. At this point, I would... I just don't like the idea of totally nixing outdoor growth.
Thank you. Anybody else? Any further comments? I do want to say one thing. One thing that concerns me with the legalization of cannabis is the fact that, like anything else, it has its abuses, and, you know, when you go driving down the street and you smell a car that's full of marijuana smoke, or you can smell the marijuana smoke coming from the vehicle, that concerns me because not only does mari... Even if the driver isn't using it, it could adversely... In my opinion, it could adversely affect the driver of the vehicle, even though they're not directly using it, especially in a closed vehicle. And I would like to see... I don't... I know it's not part of this ordinance, but I'd like to see more enforcement in that respect, that when somebody smells it, that it's taken care of. So, Counselor Shade?
Thank you. I just want to point out that, like with alcohol, driving under the influence is already illegal. It is already a crime.
Right.
You're not supposed to do it. I don't think we need a separate ordinance or to add that in ordinance, and it's already part of law not to operate any machinery under the influence of drugs or alcohol. You know, there are already laws around that, so just want to point that out.
Yeah, Counselor Green?
I have a question. I'm reading here, it says, "The special permit granting authority may modify or waive this requirement." Just for clarification, what is the permit and who is the special permitting authority? Do we permit?
Counselor Shade, could you take that?
That would be the planning board that would have the authority to waive that, and that would be part of the process of their application, applying, setting up a license, setting up a location. The planning board would have special permission or ability to waive that particular requirement.
The barrier requirement?
Correct.
Okay, any further questions? Okay, we have a motion on the floor, and we have a second. At this time... For clarification, this is just to pass it on to the public hearing, correct? That is correct, yes.
As amended.
Yep. Pass it on to the public hearing as amended. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Council Paper Number 11,826-4A, An Ordinance to Amend the Revised Ordinances of the City of North Adams, Appendix D, Fines and Fees and Fines, Section D 7, Public Service Department passed to a second reading and published as required by law. Counselor Bona, do you have an update for us? This is just a second reading. Okay.
Move to adopt.
Second. Okay, motion to adopt. We have a second. This will be a roll call vote.
Blackmer? Yes. Bona?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Fitch?
Yes.
Morrow?
Yes.
Olefskowitz?
Yes.
Shade?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Sapienza?
Yes. Okay, motion passes. Council Paper Number 12,426, An Order Granting Permission for New Pole Location on Hodges Cross Road.
Move to adopt.
Second. Motion to adopt, okay. I will read, quickly read, the letter from National Grid, and this is dated June 24th, 2024. Order for Joint or Identical Pole Locations to the City Council of North Adams, Massachusetts. Notice having been given and public hearing held as provided by law, it is hereby ordered that Massachusetts Electric Company, DBA National Grid, and Verizon, New England Incorporated, formerly known as New England Telephone and Telegraph Company, be and they are hereby grant a joint or identical locations for and permission to erect and maintain poles and wires to be placed thereon, together with such sustaining and protecting fixtures as said companies may deem necessary in the public way or ways herein after referred to as requested in petition of said companies dated the 24th day of June, 2024. All construction under this order shall be in accordance with the following conditions: Poles shall be of sound timber and reasonable straight and shall be set substantially at the points indicated upon the plan marked Hodges Cross Road, North Adams, Massachusetts. Petition Number 30996157 filed with this order. There may be attached to said poles by Massachusetts Electric Company, DBA National Grid, and Verizon, New England. Such wires, cables, and fixtures as needed in their business, and all said wires and cables shall be placed at a height of not less than 20 feet from the ground. The following are public ways or part of ways along which the poles above referred to may be erected, and the number of poles which may be erected thereon under this order. And this is for Hodges Cross Road, National Grid to install one JO, which stands for jointly-owned pole on Hodges Cross Road, beginning at a point approximately 370 feet east. The original document said west. National Grid sent us an updated copy of this today. 370 feet east of the center line of Current Highway, of the intersection of Current Highway, install midspan pole number 16-50, approximately 100 feet east, the pole number 17, to support the low-hanging wires, North Adams, Mass. Also, for permission to lay and maintain underground cables, laterals, cables, and wires in the above are intersecting public ways for the purpose of making connections with such poles and buildings as each of said petitioners may desire for distributing purposes. And this was hereby certified by National Grid. And any discussion? Hearing none? Roll call vote.
Yes.
Bona?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Fitch?
Yes.
Morrow?
Yes.
Olefskowitz?
Yes.
Shade?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Sapienza?
Yes. Licenses, we have a license, an application submitted by Matthew Christiana to be granted a license to drive a tax cab for RJ's Taxi. I make a quick point of order, please. Yes, sir. On these applications, is there information on these that we're not supposed to see? Usually, the driver's license number is blacked out, it's not our business. That's a private matter.
Okay, I... That's my error. I blacked out the birth and the social security numbers.
I was going to bring that up afterwards.
Huh?
I was going to mention it, but afterwards, so.
I'll ensure that it's out.
So, moving forward, that will not appear again.
No, and I'll make sure it's out on what we have. Thank you.
So, move to adopt or approve?
Second.
Okay, motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? An application submitted by Noel Sawtell to be granted a license to drive for RJ's Taxi.
Move to adopt.
Second.
We have a motion.
Second.
Second, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, open forum. This is an opportunity for the public to speak to the council for two minutes on issues of municipal significance. As a reminder, I will tap the gavel when you have reached your two-minute limit to signal that your time has ended, and as a courtesy... And as a courtesy, I ask that all parties, please refrain from personal, any personal attacks. One thing, before you start, I ask if there's any new information that you're going to bring to us tonight? Anything that you haven't mentioned before?
I can talk, yes.
Okay, go ahead, please. Name and address for the record.
My name is Doon Mackay. I live at 363 Eagle Street. Can you hear me? Okay, you still can hear me. Well, okay, so, as you anticipate, I wish to speak about the proposed logging plan at the notch reservoir. One thing you may not have heard is that at the most recent Conservation Commission meeting, over 60 members of the public attended. And the Conservation Commission indicated that they are feeling unable to properly review the plan, given the information they currently have, and that, I believe you're copying a letter, but I still wish to make this public, that they do not feel they have the budget to request, to acquire what they require from any, only private planters, which would be a hydrological review, independent professional review of the plan from somebody who does not stand to benefit from it. Or, and trying to make, say, only things you haven't heard before is getting me out of order here. So that, that is the essence of what I wish to say, is the Conservation Commission needs the budget to enable them to do their job and preserve the city from making a costly mistake.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
My name is Kate Abbott. I'm a local journalist. I live in Williamstown on North Husick Road, so I get my water from North Adams. And I would add to what was spoken here at the last meeting that after hearing 60 people at the Conservation Commission meeting last week, the Conservation Commission responded to concerns about the water system and the fact that runoff is a concern, erosion is a concern, the effect on the reservoir is a concern, and that the city is involved in a number of very costly infrastructure projects right now. The Army Corps of Engineers is looking at the flood system. We've just voted today, the city has just voted today, to build an elementary school at the foot of this hill. So the effects on city infrastructure, the reservoir, but also the roads, and the wetlands throughout that thousand acres, that was a concern that came up at that meeting that people spoke to, and that the Conservation Commission responded by writing a letter requesting a hydrological study, which Mass Audubon is on record saying has not been done, and an outside review, as Doon was saying, because they feel that the potential impacts have not been investigated and could be a considerable expense to the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaking to a couple of points, name and address for the record, please.
Sorry, Walt Cudna-Husky. I'm in Asheville, Massachusetts.
Thank you.
Deficient planning studies following on what has just been said. In addition to the hydrological study, it's come to our attention that either an EIR, Environmental Impact Request, or ENF, or a report from MIPA has not been produced. We've searched all the records for this plan. There's thresholds that suggest that it would be under review of MIPA. There's the fact that the, none of the resources, wetland resources, the perennial streams, or any of the other resources, well, rental pools, of which there are many on the property, and they go directly into the reservoir, are marked on the land, which means they can't be abided by if they're not visible on the land to big equipment. So many planning studies that would be required for anyone else, venture in private or corporate, are not being followed, so we're deficient on a very fragile and vulnerable site. Also, there is a legal exposure in terms of Tim Lescarbo's abutter status to this project and his having directed it, which is a direct prohibition in the ethical code. So that's something that needs to be talked about, and it's got potential financial consequences to this city. Also, we wish to be on your agenda to more fully present our concerns and understanding of this plan because it has long-lasting consequences and a potential impact financially on this community. And the last one I will say is that no one in this room can take the risk of this project being vulnerable and not properly studied. So it needs to be slowed down, and it's what our request that that happen so that the full public participation and the proper outside professional review can take place. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for open forum?
Hi, Josh Holmack, 976 State Road, also regarding Notch Road. I have a litany of concerns with this, from the conflict of interest on Lescarbo's part to the, a lack of apparent benefit to the city. I see a ton of possible harm this could do to the city, whether it's degradation of infrastructure, contaminating our drinking water. What's going to happen to Notch Road when we have truckers going up and down it all day long? We have a historical trail that has been lauded by Conde Nast. One of our biggest sources of revenue is tourism, and we're going to rip that trail up for the idea that perhaps at some point this may be beneficial to our city? It just feels incredibly short-sighted.
Thank you.
Ah, sorry, Justin Wag, 147 Beezy Street. I just ran here from Ramunto's, so thought I can get a quick bite to eat, but no such thing exists. I'm also here to talk about the Notch Road logging project. I just have a few notes. I wrote a letter to the editor that was published in iBuchers on October 4th that I encourage you to read. I'll just summarize it a bit. I believe that it presents a risk to our watershed. Logging around our drinking water is irresponsible. There will be heavy logging equipment all around the water that we drink. When I think about the benefits that the school that we just voted will have on our community, so sorry, I'm out of breath. When I think about the benefits that that will bring to our community, such as better teachers, increased property values, I look at this project and I see the exact opposite. What are those kids going to drink when our water is ruined because of these logging trucks leaking fluids all around the reservoir? So I think there's a risk of potential contamination that we have to take very seriously. No hydrological studies have been completed. Without baseline data to understand what's going on with our drinking water today, what's going on in the watershed today, how will we defend ourselves against these companies who are coming in and polluting our water? We won't have anything to look back on and say, "This is what it was, and this is what it is now." We're giving them free rein to do whatever they want. I think that, as Josh stated, Bellows Pipe is an iconic hiking trail, and it's a gorgeous area. Why are we going to deforest that? It's a little bit strange. There's plenty of places that I could imagine that we could complete this project elsewhere that don't have our drinking water in this trail.
Okay, sir, your time is up.
Thank you so much.
Okay, do we have anybody else for open forum? Any other topics, and then we can get back to the forest?
I'm on the forests.
Okay.
You ready for the forest? Okay.
I'm Virginia Reel. I live at 36 Sullivan Street. I think that the recent indication that the city might be considering an independent study and a pause on this is a good thing, and I encourage that path of action. As part of that process, I think we need to engage representatives of native peoples who have historically lived on this land, develop an overall budget for the full scope of the project, showing funding sources for all costs in which have been identified and secured and the potential cost to the city. Estimating the costs that might be incurred for secondary impacts such as damage to city streets where heavy equipment will be traveling, ongoing maintenance of the forest, and how these costs will be covered. Defining the process for handling cost overruns, which is particularly important in a project where many of the costs are uncertain, formally committing to key items that do not appear in the plan, posted in the city's website, confirming that herbicides will not be used during the full duration of the project. A firm commitment to funding for important components of, particularly the culverts, that are critical to protecting the water and the properties of the people in the area. Requiring contractors to use minimally invasive equipment and practices, appointing a North Adams representative to the board of the organization that will be overseeing the project, providing documentation of similar projects with approaches have been implemented and successful, documenting and visualizing the final state of the Bellows Trail, engaging in dialogue with Adams and Williamstown and possibly Clarksburg. Indelibly written into the history of North Adams is the experience and results of urban renewal. Large parts of the downtown were leveled based on the opinions of experts promising funding. We see every day the consequences of those decisions. Now we are considering tampering with our precious forests based on the opinions of experts promising funding.
Okay, your time is up, please. Thank you.
I think our history tells us to think carefully and consider the long-term implications of these decisions.
Your time is up, thank you. Name and address for the record, please.
Julie Blake, and I live on Furnace Street in North Adams. I also, I just wanted to add my voice on this issue. I want to echo what Virginia said and just also say I'm happy to hear that there's second opinions are being considered, possibly pausing the project or slowing it down. My understanding is that likely all of you are hearing from people on this issue. I know that there have been a lot of letters and phone calls. The citizens of North Adams are concerned about this, and we are voicing that concern, and we hope that you will amplify that and support us in it, since we are your constituents. And we appreciate anything you can do to further study the impact of this and further plan to mitigate risk if it does indeed go forward, or maybe we consider whether it's the right thing at all. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else open forum? Okay, moving on. And now, we have mayor's updates.
Thank you for all of you coming and being, coming every week. I do hear you, and as Julie did reference, we have paused the project. I do want to just address one thing, and I don't want to take up too much time with the council about Tim Lescarbo. So Walter, as you said, there's probably not any of us in the room who is as well-versed as we should be on this project. But I will tell you, Tim Lescarbo is most well-versed on when it comes to water filtration, the water system in North Adams, and he's worked several years in the private sector with water. So there's a balance there. But as far as Mr. Lescarbo, first of all, I don't appreciate people taking potshots at him, which I don't think you were doing. But secondly, this isn't a real project yet because we have hit pause. We are looking for more information. This is a conceptual project. And until we get the forest management plan and the perspectives, we don't know what direction this project is going. We are looking at other avenues and inviting other people to come in so I can hear, I don't want to say both sides, but more objective views than what Mass Audubon or the Woodlands Partnership is providing. However, the Woodlands Partnership has been a good partner with the City of North Adams for many, many years. But going back to Tim, I've heard you about your concern, and I've decided that he is going to step back from the project, but it hasn't really become a project yet. So Maria Kozek will be our administrative lead on the project, so I hope we don't have to bring that up again. So we're checking off the list. No herbicides, no Tim, and we're looking at this globally. So I am hearing you, and I really appreciate your comments, Julie, for being so respectful. So moving on to the real thing. I just want to thank everyone, especially the city council, for your support throughout the process for the Graylock School project. We were very excited about the results, and I really appreciate all your support doing that. I am very tired and looking forward to a day off tomorrow. So with that, I don't have any additional updates, but thank you.
One question, mayor.
Yes.
I had a question from a constituent earlier today. When will they be able to expect to see activity on the Graylock School project?
The project itself won't start until probably a year. We are next week meeting about the construction documents. We still have to build out all of the construction documents. Again, this is a conceptual project that didn't come to life till 8 o'clock last night. So right now, what people will see is the decommissioning of Graylock School, moving out. We hope to have a tag sale soon, kind of cleaning out things. Then we will go out to bid, and then we will publicly announce what that schedule is. We will keep the neighbors and the abutters aware of what the process is, but you won't see any construction, I would say, within the next eight months to a year. You'll see us cleaning out things and things like that. We do have to secure the building. Once we're done, what that looks like, I'm not quite sure right now. But we've got to get our construction documents done and out the door to contractors to bid.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. It won't be tomorrow, Brian.
I didn't think it would. Okay, committee reports in minutes. Hearing none, moving on. Liaise on updates, counselor concerns. Counselor Brain?
Through the chair to the mayor. I just have a question. I heard you say, "No Tim, no herbicides." One thing that concerns me with Tim is that I think he's so valuable in what he does and familiar with, you know, soup to nuts from the mountain down, that to take him completely off the project is, is not a really a good idea. I think it's best that, you know, when I looked into it, the ethics boards only wants to meet with him to determine if he would get any financial gain on his house, and that they would let him participate. Because just understanding the water system, I think it's important to have Tim involved.
He is not going to be an administrative lead on the project. He will consult with us when it comes to water, but anything relative to the surroundings of his house, he is just an advisor. He will not be involved in that aspect.
But it won't be no Tim?
Well, what I mean by no Tim is when we're talking, we mostly have been focused on the forest plan, and everyone is in an uproar because they think he's going to have lakeside view property, which is not the case. But Tim is an asset to my administration. Thank you for pointing that out. But he will not be the administrative lead. He has no financial interest in this project, nor do any of us. And I really don't want to discuss it any further, but thank you for applauding him.
The other thing, in the ordinance, the superintendent is in charge of the supervising of a project in the watershed. So I don't know, is your assistant...
If I have to, in order to address their concerns, it will be my decision if I, and I have already decided as an administrative lead, he will not be an administrative lead on this project, to satisfy the concerns of the constituents and also to protect my employee from further scrutiny.
Okay, I just don't, you know, want to draw above a cliff. The other thing that, that your assistant showed me on the, William showed me on the...
William is not my assistant. He's a permit coordinator in the Community Development Office.
Okay, but I always think, is your internship now, what's his title now?
He's the Community Development Permitting and Planning Coordinator.
Okay.
He was my intern, but he's graduated.
I just, um, he showed me there's a, a plan on the site, on our site, called Operations Plan 2024 Updated 10-224. And I haven't seen it before any board, but it's on the website.
Yep, so that was a document that, through this process, when the community wanted more disclosure, that was a document that has been going back and forth with Mass Audubon, I believe the Woodlands Partnership, et cetera. So we felt in an effort to be more transparent and to tell people what the documents were that were floating around, we added it to our website. So, you know, at this point, there is no permit to approve because we don't have, it's not a real project yet. And the part that we were going through was the first step with Mass Audubon and the Conservation Commission, and we attempted at the... Conservation Commission, and we attempted at the other meeting, which in my opinion got hijacked by other things, to address the herbicide. But again, the project has been paused. We are looking at all sides of it, and I just ask for people's patience. No logging has started, nor will it, until we come back as a community, have another community session, and talk about it.
Okay. So, that plan is just a document, it's not a, because it wasn't before the.
It's part of preparing for the perspectives.
Okay. So, it's before the.
Excuse me, this is not on the agenda. We really should be going back and forth.
It's not, okay, let's move on on this one.
Well, there's a document, and it's on the website. I'm just asking, it hasn't become before any board?
Right, but it's, I understand that, but it's not on the agenda, and it's going back and forth, and it should, it's a conversation you could actually have with the mayor, and but it's going back and forth, so I think it's. Councillor, I'll be happy to talk to you later.
Okay, it's important, but they don't want to talk about it.
It's not on the agenda.
No.
It's under concerns. It's not on the agenda.
Okay. It's not on the agenda, so let's move on. Councillor Oleskowitz.
I would just like to echo the words of the mayor and in support of Mr. Lascarbo. I'm not, I'm allowed to speak here. I'm just not getting into policy or anything here, so give me a moment here. I would just like to thank her for having the back of our director of public works, because nobody knows the water distribution and the safety of our water in the city more than Timmy, and he has been under scrutiny all over the city, which is not fair to him. And now, as we watch, it's continuing on to down to Mr. Moranti. And I would just like to thank the mayor for addressing that. Thank you.
Councillor Fitch?
Sure. A couple of things. One, there's so much fresh energy in this room, and that's really exciting and encouraging to see, and I've already mentioned this at least to Dune, but we have a lot of city commissions and boards, and there are plenty of vacancies on the website, so I just wanted to mention northadams-ma.gov, you know, from the, it looks like, the Community Commission on Disabilities to the Conservation Commission, to the Mass MoCA Commission, Parks and Rec Commission, Planning Board have openings. And if you're curious about getting involved, I'd encourage you to check out that site and to also, I believe people can apply right on the website or reach out to Mayor Maxi. And of course, Mayor Maxi appoints people per her choice to these boards and commissions, and we have the pleasure of approving them as they come through. So, I wanted to mention that, because we do have some vacancies. Another thing that I wanted to mention, just, this is the last time, I realize I've mentioned this the last few meetings, we have this Northern Tier Passenger Rail Study that has been proposed. It has been published by Mass DOT, and it's open for public comment online until this Saturday, the 12th of October. So, if people are curious about either encouraging or discouraging this project, please consider going and submitting your public comment. That's mass.gov/northern-tier-passenger-rail-study, or you can just Google that. And then, another thing that I wanted to ask about the, and this is actually councillor Sapienza, or President Sapienza, the open forum section, do, must people only speak about things that they haven't spoken about before? Is that a requirement?
Go ahead, Councillor Bona.
So, the president has, president actually doesn't have to pick on anybody, so they can raise their hand and he can, or she can deny them, because they don't, just because their hands are up. But usually, it's common for a chair to make sure that during open forum, during public forums, that there's not redundancy, that not the same five people come in, meeting after meeting, saying the same five things over and over and over. So, typically, if you read Robert's Rule, there's actually a whole section about controlling redundancy when it comes to public input. Because otherwise, you can't have literally one person coming in every meeting, saying the same thing, using two minutes, or 10 people, using 20 minutes, over and over and over. So, it has nothing to do with the topic. It has to do with the speed. And again, if you actually looked at open forums across the state, you will find a lot of city councils don't even have them. Some limit the time. They may say, we got five minutes. Whoever wants to talk, total is five minutes for everybody. Some, they have to submit letters to approve. And again, the president has the right to decide what gets said or not. So, but it's really about redundancy.
Yeah. And that was my concern tonight. Thank you.
Thank you for explaining. Oh, one more thing?
Oh, yes.
Through the chair to the mayor. A couple people have asked me recently about Heritage State Park and about the maintenance of those buildings.
Yep.
No expectation of having a answer right now.
Yeah, so we have two grant applications pending, one for Building Four, for the roof, and then one which is an environmental piece for the rest of the roofs, or the roofs, windows, caulking. I keep saying lead paint, but it really isn't lead paint, the paint, to seal all those buildings up. So, we've got our fingers crossed on those two. We expected to hear by now, but no awards have been made, so we're waiting patiently.
Fingers crossed. Thank you.
Okay, any further concerns? Any correspondents? Hearing none? I make a motion, or I entertain a motion to adjourn. So, moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, everyone. Have a good night.